Good morning. All right, it's on. I want to welcome everyone to the Mobile County Conference Commission Meeting of October the nineteenth and call the meeting to order. And our first order of business this morning, we have several members from several of our Chamber of Commerce in Mobile County, and we have a resolution to present to them. And I think Commissioner Hudson's gonna do that resolution.
Sure.
And you guys, if you're here, I see several chambers. Just come on up front if you don't mind.
And so we just thought it's very important today to recognize you for what you do better. Thank you. To recognize what you do and present because this is... We have National Local Chamber of Commerce Day, and we want to recognize you for that reason and also let the community know how much we appreciate your support in all of the good works that you do. So today we have these resolutions that we'd like to present to each Chamber of Commerce that's represented here today. And as I presented, if you would please just give your name and if you'd like to say a little something about the work that you do, we'd welcome that as well. Okay? All right. The first one reads, "In honor and recognition of your support for Local Chamber of Commerce Day, of your Local Chamber of Commerce Day, whereas in honor of your support, your Local Chamber of Commerce Day, which is observed annually on the third Wednesday in October, the Mobile County Commission applauds all the local chambers of commerce in our area. And whereas we especially recognize and value the dedication and entrepreneurial spirit of the Bi- Bala-Battery Chamber of Commerce, Chickasaw Chamber of Commerce, Dauphin Island Chamber of Commerce, Mobile Chamber of Commerce, Pritchard Chamber of Commerce, Saraland Chamber of Commerce, Sims Chamber of Commerce, Southwest Mobile Chamber of Commerce, and the Mobile Area Black Chamber of Commerce. And whereas the chambers of commerce throughout Mobile County foster stronger, more vibrant communities by advocating for priorities to promote economic prosperity, boost quality of life, and create access to meaningful employment and opportunity for all residents. And whereas the chambers of commerce and its members provide residents with a strong business environment that increases employment, retail trade and commerce, and industrial growth in order to make Mobile County a better place to live, work, shop, and play, each local chamber individually and collectively plays an integral role in helping our local state and regional economy grow stronger. Now therefore, let it be resolved, the Mobile County Commission applauds our local chambers of commerce and we proudly, and we proudly support our Local Chambers of Commerce Day in Mobile County, Alabama. We encourage all residents to learn about each of our local chambers and the impact they make by building resilient economies and promoting community-wide prosperity. Furthermore, we thank you, local chambers, for your bold leadership, creative ideas, and innovative problem-solving. Keep striving to make Mobile County better. Thank you again." First one here, let's give them a round of applause. Okay, and first of all, let's see, we have, we'll just start on this side, how about that? You want to...
Good morning. I am. I am Michelle Denise Green Wilson. I am the Chairwoman for the Mobile Area Black Chamber of Commerce, and I want to say thank you to the County Commission for supporting us in our endeavor to help those small businesses. We just put out thirteen new businesses in last month, and we have fifteen more new businesses go out so the economy can continue to grow.
Fantastic.
Hi, I'm Teresa Goolsby. I'm the President of the Chickasaw Chamber, and I'd like to tell you, I've been there two years, and I've enjoyed every minute of it. We have a motto, and we tell our businesses, "We work for you." And I think that's really important. We have twenty-two new members in two years, so I'm happy about that.
Thank you, guys. I'm David Rogers, who is the Vice President of Economic Development at the Mobile Area Chamber of Commerce. We're about seventeen hundred members for our, for our organization, the oldest and largest actually, chamber in the state of Alabama, so, and along the Gulf Coast. So we're excited to be here, but as always, just appreciate the partnership. We work with you guys constantly, and without a doubt, when we work with you on anything on a business case, it always comes to the top, so thank you all.
Good morning, thank you for having us. My name is Shaila Miller. I'm the Director at the Saraland Area Chamber of Commerce. We are three hundred and eighty members, strong and growing, and we celebrate our fortieth anniversary in 2024.
Sharon?
I'm Sharon Merle. I'm President of the Sims Chamber. We've got a lot of great things going on in Sims. Our Mayor, Brandon Van Hook, is doing a great job of bringing in new businesses, so we just appreciate the recognition and the opportunity to be here today. Thank you.
I'm Tina Purrier with Southwest Mobile County Chamber, and we are striving to empower businesses every day, and we're just appreciate the partnership with the County Commission, and we're always in the business of helping business and also helping the community. We are two hundred and fifty strong.
I think what Dina would like to do, we'll get a group shot, and then we'll do one chamber at the time with a commission.
My favorite chamber here.
All right. Cherie, do we have any speakers signed up today?
No one signed up to speak this morning.
Okay, good. I didn't mean it like, "Good," I meant...
He's actually very disappointed.
I'm very disappointed nobody's here to speak today. I didn't mean it like "good," I meant like "good, let's go forward."
Are you blushing?
All right, well, I guess if we don't have any speakers, I meant it was good because now we get to hear from Glenn Hodge, how about that?
Don't try to clean it up, Commissioner. Too late. Okay, number one, approve the list of claims. Two, authorize advertisement of requests for proposals for development of multi-unit rental housing in conjunction with the low-income tax credit and home funds.
Could we get, could we get an explanation from Gordon? I know he started explaining that to me, but I think it'd be good to give us a better idea of what we're doing.
Morning Commissioners. So the county receives home funds on a yearly basis. It's one of the funding sources we get from HUD. One of the main things that we do with it is build rental or single-family homeownership type of housing. So this is a request for developers to come to us with a proposal on how we can build either apartments or single-family homes somewhere in the county. We've done a variety of these in the past for dedicated housing to seniors, veterans, low-income groups, variety of populations.
And then if they win our money, they go to the state and compete for that pot?
Tax credits, yes ma'am.
Is it specific projects that we're, we're looking for in different areas of the county?
So we really don't have any, any focus. It's based on what the developers turn in to us.
Okay.
And we, we choose if and what we want to move forward with after we see what they propose.
All right, very good.
Thank you, Gordon.
Oh, Joe, Gordon, why are you there? I just like, so I noticed that last week they finally, we finally got some disaster recovery funds. Do we have a contract yet? Do we have to still wait on the contract?
We do not. So that was the initial letter. I actually got confirmation this morning that our official award letter comes tomorrow. Then we owe them some documentation, and then after that, they will send us an agreement, so.
And then what do we do?
Then we start our planning process. So there's a nine-month planning process for the disaster funds, and after that, we would get to the actual projects that we're gonna do with the funding.
Okay. Are we gonna have to procure a planning? Will we, someone to help us with the planning process, or?
So we've done a RFP for the planning consultant. We're working on the contract now between them and ourselves, and it will be on the commission agenda coming up to consider awarding that proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Number three, authorize advertisement of requests for proposals for development of affordable single-family housing units in conjunction with the home program. Number four, approve a letter of support of Bright Speeds grant application to the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs, Alabama Broadband Accessibility Fund, for one broadband project in the county. Number five, approve appointment of the former Mobile County Sheriff, Sam Cochran, to serve as a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Mobile County Communications District for four years, effective November thirteenth, 2023, and will expire November twelfth, 2027. Number six, approve reappointment of Rory Hodge, Robert Adams, and Dr. Timothy E. Hughes to serve as members of the Board of Commissioners of the Mobile County Communications District, each of a four-year term, effective November thirteenth, 2023, and will expire November twelfth, 2027.
So do, the terms aren't staggered? Do they all come up at the same time? How does this work?
They're, Glenn, you can answer, or I can answer.
Some of them are staggered. Some of them are staggered.
They are, okay.
Yes.
We just had so many with the same one?
Yeah, we had four.
Okay.
I think you're on that board, and aren't you on that board? And you're not up till twenty-seven, twenty-six. Some of them, these four just have to all come up at the same time. One of them, of course, is a resignation where we temporarily appointed the Dr. Hughes last week, and so we're just reappointing him for a new term.
Okay. Number seven, approve appropriation contract with Satsuma City Schools Boards of Education, any amount of four thousand six twenty from District One Education Funds to purchase school supplies for Robert E. Lee Elementary School. Number eight, approve appropriation contract with Joe Jefferson Players, Inc., any amount of five thousand from District One Education Funds to cover the cost of transportation fees. And we're gonna eliminate that word "for," and it's gonna read "transportation fees" to the production of Gee's Ben staged play.
And I think it's transportation fees for school students?
For school students. Okay, we'll make that correction. Number nine, approve appropriation contract with Saraland City Schools Board of Education in a total amount of eight thousand two ninety-eight from District One Education Funds to purchase school supplies for the elementary schools as follows. Number ten, approve appropriation contract with Chickasaw City Schools Board of Education in a total amount of three thousand seven twelve from District One Education Funds to purchase school supplies for the elementary schools as follows. Number eleven, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County, any amount of forty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-six fifty from District One Education Funds to help support the Coral Department academic programs and provide student-teacher incentives for John L. LaFlore Magnet High School. Number twelve, approve sponsorship agreement with Dauphin Island Sea Lab Foundation in a total amount of five hundred dollars for its marine environmental awards luncheon. Funds will be divided as follows. Number thirteen, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County in a total amount of twenty-four thousand four eighty to cover the cost of travel expenses to perform at the World Strive Coral Festival in Chicago, Illinois, for the Ben C. Rain High School Coral Department. Funds will be divided as follows. Fourteen, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County in amount of twenty-five thousand from District Three Education Funds to cover the cost of concrete for on-campus greenhouse at Bryant Career Technical Center. Number fifteen, approve appropriation contract with the city of Satsuma in the amount of seven thousand five hundred from District One Education Funds for the Satsuma Public Safety Department Christmas Outreach Program. Number sixteen, accept a grant award from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, for the 2023 Mobile Area Law Enforcement Initiative Justice Assistance Grant Program, in a amount of two hundred and twenty-one thousand twenty-seven twenty-four, with no local match.
Gordon, did you, did you work on this grant? Can you give a...
Yes, Commissioner. So this is yearly funding we get, split between ourselves, the city of Mobile and the city of Pritchard. This year is actually the city of Mobile's to manage, but the county receives about half of the funding.
Okay. And what is the money used for?
So the sheriff's office chooses what to spend it on. It's used for equipment, staff time, variety of different things.
Thank you.
Number seventeen, approve a lease agreement with SMG and the city of Mobile, and Mobile County Commission for the rental of the Mobile Civic Center, meeting room sixteen, in the amount of four thousand dollars for poll workers' training, February twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four, for probate court pending legal review. Eighteen, approve professional services agreement with Airwind, Inc., for updating existing elections-related materials, any amount not to exceed fifteen thousand, and will terminate on September thirtieth, 2024, for probate court pending legal review. Nineteen, approve event space rental agreement with Abbot Shrine Center for polling workers' training at a rate of a hundred dollars per hour for February sixteen, twenty-first, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four, for probate court pending legal review. Twenty, approve appropriation contract with Restore Mobile, Inc., in amount of twenty-five thousand from District One Commission Funds for acquisition and stabilization of brick-and-mortar restoration projects. Twenty-one, approve appropriation contract with Trinity Gardens Communities Civic Club, any amount of five thousand from District One Education Funds for its community black heritage parade. Twenty-two, approve a purchase of three parcels of real property from Dr. Jean G. Crawford, located at fourteen oh five Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue, Mobile County, Alabama, for purchase price of five thousand four hundred, fourteen oh seven, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue, Mobile County, Alabama, for purchase price of sixty-three thousand, and fourteen oh nine, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue, Mobile County, Alabama, for purchase price of thirty thousand, for a total purchase price of ninety-eight thousand four hundred plus all closing costs, and to authorize the commission president to sign all documentation related to this transaction.
These are three adjacent properties?
Yeah.
And those are the, I was just kinda wondering why the three properties have such a discrepancy in the appraisal prices on them?
So one of the lots is vacant, and fourteen oh seven was Vernon Crawford's Law Office. So it's the most substantial of the buildings, and then on the other side is a small duplex that was once, once had two businesses in it, but they all right there, almost on the same campus together, but that, that's what it is.
So some of them have, some of the parcels have structures and some do not? Okay. I was just curious of the, but it makes sense if there's structures on the property?
And these, particularly fourteen oh seven, is one of the sites on the Civil Rights and Cultural Heritage Trail, and it's right now, it needs some, some attention, because people come into our city and they come by the building, and, and so we had a willing, a willing seller, so.
Man, that's, I have no issue at all with the purchase. I was just curious about the discrepancy in the, the price, the appraisal prices. Thank you.
Twenty-three, adopt a resolution authorizing requests of the Revenue Commissioners Office at the Eight Mile Shopping Center to dispose of certain items for fixed assets inventory lists. Twenty-four, adopt a resolution authorize requests of the Revenue Commissioners Office to, at the Theodore Oaks Shopping Center to dispose of certain items for the fixed assets inventory lists. Twenty-five, approve appropriation contract with the Board of Commissioners of Mobile County in the amount of fifty-two thousand five seventy-four from District One Education Funds to purchase school supplies for the Mobile County Public Schools as follows. Twenty-six, adopt a resolution authorizing requests of the Mobile County Sheriff's Office Metro Jail to dispose of certain items from the fixed assets inventory list. Twenty-seven, approve U.S. Department of Interior, U.S. Geological Survey Joint Funding Agreement for Water Resource Investigations in Mobile County to fund a river level gauge adjacent to Escataba Hollow Park and campground, and to be paid with a one-time annual payment of sixteen thousand dollars. There's been a change, the actual source, funding source will be Mobile County Parks Budget Cost Center zero-nine-one.
What's the, what's the purpose? Is this a water quality monitor, or sea level rise, or one of those other scary things?
Good morning. It is one of those other scary things, but riverine flooding from the Escataba watershed. Just monitor the levels of the river and how it might be flooding.
How it might be?
Flooding, rising too fast, too high.
Okay.
I have a question also. So there's a, these, the gauge at Airport Boulevard at Little, it's not Big Creek, I guess it's, well, it's not Big Creek Lake, but Big Creek, or Little Dog River that runs right there before. I guess I'm bringing this up to you, I could do it in private, but since it's here, I was, I had some questions about it, because some people south of there had some concerns, because that, they had heard that the Department of Interior was gonna remove that gauge. There is a gauge there that's also part of the Escataba River system. If you could check on that for me and find out what it would take for them to leave that gauge there. Some people south of that gauge have, have some flooding issues in the past that relates to that river system, and they would like to keep it there. If we could figure out a way to do that?
Well, we actually could. They were going to remove this gauge, and that's why we entered in, we're entering into this agreement, so I can reach out to them.
I would love to find out about the same on the one, it's, if you're going east-west on Airport and you cross the little bridge there before Grand Bay Wilmer, the gauge is right to the left, and they were, some talks of removing it, and I would like to see if we could keep it there too for some people down in the south end of the county that have, are concerned about it being removed, because they use the gauge quite often to...
I'll reach out to the, our contact and see what we need, we'll come back to you with another agreement or an amendment to this one.
Yes, thank you.
What, what's the purpose? I mean, why, why do they, are they discussing removing these? Uh, funding. It's just a funding issue? Okay.
I think they, I think that, for some reason, but they're very valuable to people who depend on those gauges to know what the water's gonna do after a rain, because particularly if, I depend on one of these gauges for some property, and you might, may not necessarily get rain in Mobile County, but you may get rain in Montgomery and not even be aware, but I check a gauge like this every day for a piece of property, and, and the people that live south of those gauges sometimes check them, and these are farmers, a lot of times in the south end of the county, who depend on to know exactly, they may have cattle on a piece of property, and they watch this gauge, and it may be beautiful here, and people don't think about these gauges, but if it rains up north and it comes this way, or if they open the dam and up in Coffeyville, all of these water systems are affected by that, so. That's why they're so important, so that people can move cattle around, or, or prepare for their crops, or, or sometimes in some situations, like for this one, even move real property assets, like which is, this one's important to the county, I'm sure, because of the campgrounds there, because if you don't know what's gonna flood there, you could have an issue.
It just allows you to prepare in advance.
So.
And USGS maintains a stream level, stream gauge network throughout the country, and all this data's available online, so I'm sure they'd be happy to work with us on adding more or keeping it.
Yeah, I would love to see what we could do about that when it, I think it's Big Creek, but not Big Creek Lake, it's, it's actually the creek that runs off of Big Creek Lake that hits the Escataba River, so.
We'll get back to you soon on that.
Thank you.
Tina, why are you there? Do we still have the, are we still, we still have the storm surge monitors out?
Yes, ma'am, we have the storm surge monitoring network that the county funds and annual maintenance of in five locations along the coast, yes.
Thank you.
Number twenty-eight, adopt a resolution affirming the county's intent to comply with the Construction Best Management Practices Plan for the Mobile County Golf Course in regard to the city mobile issuance of the land disturbance permit pending legal review.
Is this a prerequisite of something? If we agree to comply with these, is that like compliance with their permit requirements or what?
We've been working with the city to get a land disturbance permit for the golf course project, and a requirement of that land disturbance permit is to post a bond for all of the erosion control items, which in the case of the golf course is about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So in lieu of the bond, the city has allowed the county, since we are a government entity, we're not a developer, we're not going anywhere, to adopt this resolution, basically stating that we'll comply with the requirements of the permit in lieu of posting that bond.
Good.
They were trying to require the contractor to have a bond for the land disturbance. This is for the contract that we've already awarded to Ben Radcliffe Construction for the infrastructure part of the golf course, and they were trying to, I won't say they were trying to, they were obviously working with us, but they were initially wanting the contractor to have a bond for his portion of work, and then they wanted the county to have an additional bond for the rest of the property, so this resolution will help resolve that issue with that, I believe. Is that right?
Basically.
Thank you.
Okay. What's the timeline, or are you looking at?
Oh, I mean, we've, Radcliffe is ready to mobilize on that. Have we already had pre-construction? Me, I mean, the only thing we're waiting on now is the city to approve this resolution once we get it to them.
Once we get the land disturbance permit, he'll, he'll be...
Move quickly.
We've already had pre-construction... Yeah, we've already had, we've already had pre-construction. I mean, they're, Radcliffe is sitting on go. They, they're wanting to move equipment in there, I believe, yesterday. So the sooner we can get this done, the quicker they can start to work. The sooner we can have a nice golf course in South Mobile County.
Okay, twenty-nine, approve lease agreement with SMG and the City of Mobile and Mobile County Commission for the rental of the Mobile Civic Center Theater in total estimated amount of eleven thousand four ninety-one seventy-two for the Souls of Time Historical Musical Drama. Number thirty, approve contract amendment number six to the Mobile County Park Initiative Contract with Watermark Design Group LLC, dated June twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, to add addition engineering and design NCNI Services for Lynxman Golf Course. And we're gonna add in there the funding sources to Gomasa dash twenty-one oh five Cost Center zero eight seven Fund one eighteen. Thirty-one, take the following action on bids.
Commissioners, I have a correction on a few of the bids for Public Works.
On which one?
Um, let's see. Is it number eight, the eighth bid? Where it talks about.
What's the bid number on that?
Uh, let's see. We're looking. It's this one right here? Yeah. It starts with the fifth bid?
Starts with what?
The fifth bid.
One fifty dash twenty-three.
Uh, no, after that one, the next one.
One fifty-one dash twenty-three?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, it has Cost Center zero eighty-one, which is correct, but the fund should be one eleven.
That's the four new crew caps.
Fund one eleven instead of zero zero one.
Right. The fund zero zero one is a general fund, but these are purchased from the gasoline tax fund, which is one eleven. So all of the ones that have Cost Center zero eighty-one, the fund should be one eleven.
Or fund zero zero one is one eleven, right?
It should be one eleven, yes.
It's all the vehicles purchases?
Yes. That have the Cost Center zero eight one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Number thirty-two, approve renewal software subscription agreement with Leeds Online LLC in the amount of thirteen thousand seven twenty for Leeds Online Power Plus Investigation System Service Package for the Sheriff's Office. Thirty-three, approve software renewal contract with Tenex Software Solutions, Inc. in the amount of twenty thousand for service on-site support for twenty twenty-four primary EPB setup, primary elections, and primary runoff elections for probate court. Thirty-four, approve maintenance renewal agreement with SolarWinds in the amount of two thousand eight fifty-five for network performance monitor SL two fifty and net flows traffic analyzer module for the Revenue Commissioner's Office at the Michael Square Shopping Center. Thirty-five, approve maintenance agreement with Tran U.S. Inc. under the current purchasing cooperative, Omnia Racing, number through thirty-three forty-one for a total amount of thirty-one thousand two forty-five for York International Chillers, three located in Government Plaza and two in Government Plaza Annex for the Building Maintenance Department. Thirty-six, approve maintenance agreement with Echo Companies LTD in the amount of twenty-four thousand one fourteen for three boiler units at Government Plaza Tower for Building Maintenance Department. Thirty-seven, approve maintenance agreement with Thompson Power Systems under the current purchasing cooperative agreement, Source Well Contract in the total amount of twenty-eight thousand two sixty-six seventy-three for five generators and four automatic transfer switches at Metro Jail for the Building Maintenance Department. Thirty-eight, approve service agreement with Unit Fiber LLC for monthly internet access, monthly recurring costs, in the amount of twenty-four thousand nine twelve forty-nine for thirty-six months pending legal review. Thirty-nine, approve service agreement with Unity Fiber LLC for monthly phone access, monthly recurring costs, in the amount of twenty-three thousand six seventy-nine twenty for thirty-six months pending legal review. Number forty, we do have an EFP number for that. Authorize EFP number eleven for one sixteen dash twenty-four professional services contract with Michael Campbell Archipus to preserve and catalog historic, historical information and images related to the sites on the Civil Rights and Cultural Heritage Trail in amount not to exceed seventeen thousand five hundred exclusive of expenses. Funding source will be from the District One Education Funds. Forty-one, approve Camp One two-story building renovation to Michael Baker International for the design, bidding, and project administration associated with the renovation of the first and second floors of Camp One building, in amount of forty-two thousand. In commission, right before the meeting, Jeff called. This is gonna be an add-on. I sent you the email concerning the education activity at the Strickland Youth Center. And the vendor that will have that responsibility will be the Mobile School System. And it has to be on the agenda before the end of this month, so we'll add that on.
So they will make the decision?
They made the decision.
Who will provide that service at Strickland and it will be presented to us for approval? Is that?
That should be a MOU.
And so, should they select Point Academy, for instance, then they would, then the funding would go to Point Academy through the?
Point Academy is not, no longer gonna be.
They're not?
Purchase of bidding? No, no, ma'am.
Okay.
It'll be, yeah, the school system itself.
Okay. Okay.
And we do have an engine and care board meeting on Monday.
Yeah, thank you. Hi, Mr. Cagley. You ready?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. We would ask that on Monday, you consider taking the following action. Item one, approve change order number one with integrity maintenance on the contract for the removal of the five portable buildings at the old Castle Diva School.
Commissioner, that, Ryan concludes things at that location. Everything is done. Subdivision is complete and the buildings have been removed.
And all the title stuff is clear?
It is.
Okay.
Per Pierce Ledger, yes ma'am. So we'll be getting with you about next steps.
Right.
Item two, approve supplemental agreement number one with southern land development for our Hubert Morris Road Project for some additional work that's necessary to wrap that thing up. Item three, approve preliminary final plat of Salco eighty subdivision. That's nine lots up there in Commission District One. Item four, approve final plat of Heritage Lake Phase One B and accept the road rights away as shown below and accept the roads in the subdivision for maintenance and accept the warranty deed for the right-ofway. That's in Commission District Two.
Are, are we, um, we're, we're good with all that over there or is this just inside the subdivision?
This is just the subdivision. We have a performance bond in hand for the work on Airport Boulevard that we're not sure if it is fully compliant yet.
Okay, thank you.
I need to sit down and talk with you about some possible options on that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Item five, approve preliminary plat of Beverly Gardens, Unit Four. That's thirty-three lots in Commission District Three. Item six, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreements for River Road. That's one of our twenty-twenty page go projects. Item seven, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds and easements from the following property owners on one of our twenty-twenty page go projects. And item eight, Commissioners, is an add-on, came in yesterday afternoon. We ask that you approve the Jeremiah Denton Airport Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Program Policy Statement and that is in accord with the Aeronautics Bureau. And that is it.
All right. We, as Glenn said, we do have an engine and care board meeting on Monday. So. Do you have any?
Nothing.
Comments or announcements? Comments or announcements?
No.
All right. Well, everybody have a great weekend and we'll see y'all back here on Monday.